Get all rise for the pledge. Okay. Mayor, could you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting the good fight in Ukraine and those suffering from the military conflict in the Middle East. Also, also those suffering from the tornadoes and weather events in the Southeast, Midwest, and also in memorial for Tom Esposito's mother, Rachel Esposito, who just passed. Thank you. Yep, could we do the creed?
Uh, the Americas Creed by William Tyler Page. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy in a republic, sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity, for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Thank you. Do we have anybody?
I have a Mr., Darrell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Darrell Curland, head of outreach on the New Milford Community Emergency Response Team. They've kept me in that role. On behalf of the CERT officers and other volunteer members, we thank you for your continuing support and willingness to utilize the CERT to help out the township during planned events and unexpected emergencies. Big sigh of relief, spring is here and more than welcome after this past winter. With the advent of spring, a CERT training will occur from April 30th through May 17th. The emphasis is personal and community emergency preparedness. The training is free and provides an abundance of useful information to improve readiness and resilience in the face of disaster. Space is available for people to participate. An easy way to get more information and sign up for the training is via our public website, newmilkfordcert.org. And our technical guru just made a shortened name, nmcert.org, available, which will make it quicker to type. We are looking for ways to publicize the training. It is posted on newmilkfordnow.org, and we will put out flyers in strategic locations, but appreciate the council's help in telling any of their contacts, neighbors, and friends. Recently, our chief, Al Tanny, and I were privileged to speak with the Greater New Milford Women's Club, which was very engaged and receptive. And we have previously spoken at groups such as the Rotary, a New Milford Police Cadets Meeting, a luncheon learn at the Congregational Church, just to name a few. As head of the CERT outreach, I am glad to talk and have question and answers with any groups, including community associations, faith-based organizations, schools or PTOs, clubs, et cetera, about the CERT and the possibility of volunteering with us. We can distribute emergency preparedness materials as well. I can be contacted via the contact feature at our CERT website or whenever you may see me, as I tend to be at all events that CERT is present. While we, while we all hope to avoid any large-scale emergencies in the New Milford area, you can know that the dedicated volunteers in the New Milford CERT stand ready to assist when called upon. Thank you again.
Address.
Uh, address, please, NewMilfordcert.org. If you can, you can have this, so it's present in that term.
Your, your address.
Uh, my home address, 12 Old Mill Road.
I don't have anybody else.
Mayor?
I want to thank you. Stand up. You're my neighbor.
Yes.
I want to thank you for the work you've done since we appointed you. Uh, we need to know more about emergency preparedness, and I think, uh, you gotta keep up what you're doing.
And since I'm, uh, head of, head of outreach, I also work closely with Officer Jacob Schneider, who we affectionately know as Officer Jake, who is the, currently the community liaison officer with the New Milford PD. And so we try and piggyback on, on events, and, uh, we really want to get the message out, because the more people are prepared, um, the more resilient we can be in the face of an unexpected problem.
How many members do you have now?
Right now, we have, uh, in the low thirties in terms of membership, with a, probably a very active 12 to 15 of us who can be, uh, available fairly quickly if the call comes. And, and the, the earlier we know, of course, about planned events in town, the more quickly we can make our plans to staff up appropriately to handle barricades or whatever you need us to.
Thank you. Very well.
Please thank everybody for the packs to go.
Yes.
Very, very nice.
Okay.
That is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, Katie?
Okay. I'd like to move item number four A, B, and C, the prior minutes tax collector report and the Parks and Rec donations.
Have a second. Thank you, Mary Jane. Any discussion, all of us in favor?
Could I just read for the Parks and Rec? Uh, just so we can thank people, Parks and Recreation would like to thank Ives Bank for a donation of $100 that will be used to purchase materials and supplies for the egg hunt on April 12th. Uh, the $500 donation from Mountain High Organics, which will be used for the eight mile and five K road races. And they are requesting that the monetary donations be deposited in the recreation revenue account number 104-505-00-4470. And Parks and Rec Commission thanks these donors for their generosity.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Mayor's comments.
Uh, with the, uh, okay of the council, what I'd like to do first is have our report from our student advisory board. I know they're right up there. If they could give us, uh, kind of an update on what's going on to you, Katie.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Bass. Um, I'll be discussing some of the upcoming events or... Oh, my name is Lourdes, Lyda, and I'll just be discussing some youth agency events. Um, first off, we have our teen night, uh, Arena After Dark, which happened on Saturday, March 1st. We drew in many local teens and featured entertainment from DJ Pierre, along with multiple giant inflatables that the teens enjoyed. Many attendees sang karaoke while others enjoyed the great music. We had Jersey mics cater for this event, which seemed to have drawn in many people. Teens had fun in the main gym with the music and inflatables while enjoying a relaxed environment in the hall where they could rest and enjoy some free Jersey mics. As for numbers, there were an estimated 50 to 60 attendees, with most of the teens being in eighth and ninth grade. However, there were people from every grade enjoying this event. Next, we have our Bridging the Gap Youth Forum. Our youth forum is officially scheduled for May 15th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the E. Paul Martin Room. After getting feedback from students via a Google form, the topics we have selected to focus on are mental health, which includes substance, substance abuse, school safety, which includes bullying, and resources available to students for life after high school. Next is our field trip to Community State, uh, Connecticut State Community College. Lastly, we would like to announce that registration is open for a free trip to Community, um, college at the Waterbury Campus. Open house for this trip is on April 5th. Myself and a few friends are signed up to attend, and this event can, um, have some more people if they register at myyouthagency.com. Thank you for your time.
Much, that was a great report. Thank you. Okay. Next, under Mayor's comments, uh, before I get into some of our stuff, I'd ask Brian Hembrook, and I've also, uh... One second. Also ask Graham, who's our, uh, events director. The state of Connecticut is, there is a particular bill that's going through their legislature that would drastically change how we would operate our camps and our childcare. So I'd like the two of them to come up to talk about how impactful, if this bill was to come through, and it would be detrimental to our working families.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of Town Council. Uh, my name is Graham Musson. As, as Mayor Bass said, I am Director of Programs and Events for Parks and Recreation.
I'm Brian Hembrook. I'm with the Youth Agency. I'm the prevention manager, and I oversee our summer camp.
All right, so just getting into a little detail about kind of what is proposed in the bill. So, um, it's a bill that's largely addressing issues for children ages zero to five, except for two sections of the bill that are specifically addressing municipal day camps and the exemption that we have historically had to licensing by the Office of Early Childhood, um, as well as, uh, doing stuff through Department of Children and Families. So with that, if that licensing exemption were to get taken away, um, it would involve the following changes that all have some kind of associated cost to them. So first off, uh, would be, we would be required to do background checks through the Department of Children and Families for all employees, um, and to be repeated every five years. Um, the cost of those is estimated $88.25 per check, and we already do background checks through the Personnel Office and the New Milford Police Department. Um, there would be a licensing fee of $815 to be paid every year. Currently, our structure involves a camp director, uh, a supervisor, two supervisors, depending on how many campers we have, and then an appropriate number of counselors for the amount of registrants we have. We maintain a one to eight ratio of counselors to campers. Uh, the licensing requirement is only one to nine or one to 12 for kids that are over six. So like, that's something we are already doing above and beyond. Um, this would require us to have an additional, either assistant director or a backup camp director that has all the same qualifications just to potentially have some kind of backup in there. Um, and like the experience for that, like, they need to have already worked as a youth camp director, had 16 weeks administrative or supervisory experience or equivalent administrative supervisory training. Um, I don't know if anyone knows this, that's not a hot commodity in, like, the personnel field right now, so trying to find camp directors is not easy enough. Trying to have to double our current capacity for that is definitely an undue burden. Um, it would require, so some of our, all of our camps go to Lindemming at least once a week to take advantage of the beach, take advantage of the swim area, the playground. This would require, if we had any kind of aquatic activity, to have a waterfront director that is lifeguard certified and at least 20 years of age. Anytime we are already at Lindemming, we have our lifeguard staff on site. Nobody's going in the water without the lifeguards, and we dedicate at least one lifeguard specifically to Camp Walk. Um, it would require us to, uh, maintain physical examination or health status certification records for all campers and all staff, um, up to and including immunization records for all campers and all staff. Um, a physician or APRN would have to be either on call or potentially on site. This is an unanswered question. There's a number of unanswered questions that we have right now that we've tried to get some kind of clarification on, but it seems as though the Office of Early Childhood is also a little bit in the dark as to what this bill might mean and what impacts it would have. Um, and then we would also be required to have a director of first aid for, uh, at least 21 years of age if we do not have a physician or APRN on site at all times. Um, so things we're still looking for clarification on, uh, exactly what the terms of that physician and APRN requirement are, whether they're purely on call, on site, um, as well as for the camps that I oversee, we're at three different sites between Scotticoke, Northville, and JPCC. So it's possible that all of these regulations would then apply threefold to the Parks and Rec program. Um, we need clarification on whether our existing staffing accomplishes first aid director and waterfront director, um, because within that, I certify every staff member in first aid CPR and aid usage. In terms of what they're looking for from a first aid director is someone that is certified in first aid. So, stuff that we are already accomplishing. Um, we also have optional field trips that are on, uh, Fridays and, uh, last Thursday, but, um, with that being said, that's not a trip that every single camper goes on. So at those times, we are dividing up the camp. Do leave appropriate staff behind for the campers that are just attending camp and not a part of those field trips. But this brings into question if we would essentially have to maintain our exact camp structure for those field trips as well as back on site. There's a question of, we go to Clatter Valley Park every other week, um, but the regulations involve having, uh, functioning bathrooms, uh, ratio of like 20, uh, one toilet per 20 campers, uh, few, and like running water, stuff like that. So that's a campsite that, or that's an offsite that we try and just take advantage of and give them a little change of scenery, but it's now a question mark as to whether we're allowed to do that. Um, and then it's really just a question of, if this were to go into effect, where the original language of the bill has it in effect as of July 1 of this year, so we're on a very short timeline. This is still being discussed, negotiated, um, but if this were to pass, how would we absorb the costs of all of these changes?
Just a quick question, Graham, how many campers do you have? Roughly.
Like in terms of just how many people register, or like, how many do we have at one time?
How many do you have at any given time?
At any given time, there's, uh, 60 to 80, uh, between, like, at each JPCC and Northville, Scotticoke is usually somewhere between 20 and 30 at a time.
So those would all have, you'd have to get the medical background and all that, yeah.
Yeah, for everyone that comes through, even if they're just here for a week. So like, those numbers even increase, because the, a lot of that is just some kids that are signed up for everything, but yeah, the numbers are even bigger.
Thanks.
All right.
So I figured what I would do is kind of give you guys a little bit of background on...
Mary Jane had a question.
Oh, sir.
Um, yeah, you mentioned about the licensing fee. Is that for, um, counselors, $815, or is that just for the agency?
My, my immediate understanding would just be that, like, Parks and Recreation would need a license to operate the camp. It's very possible that that would apply threefold to each site, because there is a, like, they come in, like, not the investigation, but like, they come in and inspect each site that we would be at, and there's certain qualifications that need to be at each site, at least as of right now. So it's possible that that licensing fee would apply threefold.
And is this House Bill? Is this what, do you know what the number is?
Senate Bill. Uh, Connecticut State Senate Bill.
Senate Bill?
Yeah.
Do you know what the number is?
Uh, it's, it's Committee Bill Number Six. It's with the, um, hold on, it's with, it's with the Committee on Children. That's who it was referred to, but through the State Senate.
All right.
Yeah, so I figured I would just give you guys a little bit of background on why the exemption was in place to begin with, um, because it typically, more regulations are, are usually a good thing when it comes to working with kids. Um, that exemption was in place so that agencies like Parks and Rec and Youth Agency could run larger-scale camps, um, service more kids in an affordable way. Um, it allows us to utilize the school buildings. Um, so we, as the Youth Agency, used to be licensed when we were in the school. We carry our youth camp license throughout the year. So we offer before and after-school care under the same licensing that we run our, our summer camp from. Um, and we used to be licensed, and we would run into issues where the inspector would come and the water in the school would be too hot for the students in the school, but not too hot for, or too, I'm sorry, not too hot for the students in the school, but too hot for our camp. Or there wouldn't be enough lighting for us, but there would be enough lighting for the school. And because we don't, uh, control the building, it makes it very hard for us to get those buildings licensed. Um, so that's one of the things that we're still up in the air about when they come to license these buildings under this new bill. If they license it like a childcare building, all of the buildings that we're in right now aren't, uh, aren't usable. And so it really puts us in a tough spot of how are we gonna run a camp with a large number of kids, um, in a space that's effective? The most concerning part, we talked about this a little bit, is the timing of this all. Um, because the bill hasn't passed yet, we, we're going into summer not really knowing, you know, we're hiring staff now, we're planning trips, we're, you know, have already registered all of our families, um, without the idea of any of this stuff being in place. Um, so we're hopeful that, I have calls into the Office of Early Childhood with a lot of these questions, we haven't heard back yet. Um, but it's causing a lot of anxiety for our camps and for our directors to just kind of figure out how we run all this in an effective way. Both of our camps follow 99% of the licensing as, as it is now. Um, the things that we don't, that we were exempted from are those things that we don't really have control over, um, and all those things are getting thrown back into this, so, um, that's kind of making it tough, so.
That office has a, now is so behind in all of the things that they're supposed to be checking. I'd be surprised if you got it in time for summer.
Yeah, and, and again, the, Graham had talked about the timing. They, they want the licensing in 30 days before camp starts, and so that puts us at June 1st. So we're talking about less than two months, so.
It's 169 towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and from our standpoint, I mean, Graham has, was, gave his numbers. I mean, we have 85 kids each week at camp for our program, so, I mean, that's hundreds of kids that, um, you know, if we can't get this going, have to figure out what we're gonna do for those families for the summer, so. And again, this is all in an effort to try to make things affordable and, and cost-effective for families in the town. If we had to pay for those buildings that we're in, we can't charge what we charge for either of our camps if we had to do that, so.
Have you been in touch with other towns that are experiencing the same, you know, kind of...
Yeah, so, um, this initially got brought to my attention through, um, our Connecticut Recreation governing body, the, uh, Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association. Um, so this is something that most municipalities in town, in the state, are aware of. Uh, most of us submitted some kind of testimony, uh, when this bill was initially being discussed, uh, displaying our opposition to it. Uh, pretty much all of us have written to our elected representatives, trying to do the same thing. So it's something that people are aware of, but until anything gets really definitive, there have not been hard conversations of like, okay, this is what's happening. The conversation right now is more than trying to push back against it and either get the provision taken out or changed, or at least give us some more time to operate on it. Like, we, we're just of the opinion that something has to give.
And the hard part is, this is, this is sandwiched into a bill that has a lot of great things into it. Um, it's all about providing baby bottles for newborn babies and low-cost, uh, formula and things. And then right smack in the middle of it is, is this part of it, which we don't love, so.
Is, um, we belong to CCM, is there a possibility that they can jump in on this?
They are.
Are they?
They are.
Great.
But I think that the council should kind of be aware.
Right.
At the next meeting, we're gonna have more.
Yeah.
Because some of these bills are coming through, just should be concerning to us as, you know, these particular, uh, camps for our working families, our Alice families. This is, this is the only way they can have their kids in camp while they go to work, and if they institute these things, it'll be unaffordable.
And that always stands for our, our school year camps, so.
Have the parents been asked to advocate, you know, send, like, if you gave them a copy of the letter? I mean, we've, United Ways done that when things have come up, and just keep sending it, sending emails, bombarding the senators and the mayor, or the governor?
Potentially, um, like, speaking for myself, there's a certain degree of not trying to raise too much of a flag about this, at least amongst the families that are already registered and all that, because I'm not trying to create a necessary panic of, well, what are we gonna do for summer? Have people trying to start pulling registrations if they think that some...
So you don't talk about it to them?
And also myself, no.
I haven't either, but the timing of us all, as, by the time we found out, we submitted testimony three days later, and then that was closed, and so...
I see.
There, there wasn't a whole lot of time for us to kind of...
Well, that's the testimony to the senate, but we have our representatives and, and senator...
Yeah, and, and my hope is that if I get a little bit more clarification, because again, I don't want to push back against a bill that doesn't really impact...
Well, that's true.
So if they say, hey, we're gonna come in and, and when we license these buildings, we're gonna, we're gonna understand that they're school buildings, and we're just gonna make sure everything's safe. That's workable, and I'd love to pass that on to our families. But if they come back and say, hey, no, you're gonna have to follow all of this stuff to the letter, then it makes it much, and I, I think that's when we start to try to get a ground...
Their lack of staff, I mean, I mean, I know because they have to come in and certify certain things that we have for our home daycare people and other things. And they're, you know, they just don't have a lot of people, and now we're talking as 169 towns. That's nuts.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you for letting us know. Okay, uh...
Mayor's comments.
Thank you. Couple of, uh, thank yous to Faith Prep, Faith Prep Principal Nicole Santora Joseph and second-grade teacher Grace Solaski, as they brought their second-grade class to visit Town Hall and, uh, learn about local government. And, uh, Darrell was here. We wanted to thank the New Milford CERT team for their go-bags. It was for social services, of which CERT received a grant from EverSource. They had 48 backpack-to-go bags, which consisted of first aid kits, a blanket, woolen hat, gloves, socks, flashlights, toiletries, emergency flashers, manual can openers, bandanas, wipes, playing cards, duct tape, which can be used for an emergency. So thank, thank you to New Milford CERT. Want to congratulate New Milford High School varsity swimmer Liam Fletcher Ford, who finished seventh in the state of Connecticut meet in the 50 freestyle. He had a team record of 21.68 seconds. He also finished fifth in the 100 free with a time of 47.68, so congratulations. Want to wish the New Milford High School varsity baseball team good luck in this year's 2025 season. Want to also congratulate, and we've highlighted, uh, this athlete a few times, uh, New Milford High School gymnast All-American Havilin Brown, and she qualified for regionals. Want to congratulate the Soccer Club of New Milford U-15 ladies, who took second place in the Westport Tournament. Uh, also want to congratulate the cast and crew, the pit orchestra, the set building team, volunteers and production team, also including Director, uh, Alessandro Aminia for the play that the high school had, which is Legally Blonde. It was a fantastic, uh, production for those that went and saw it. Also want to congratulate the New Milford Soccer Club, New Milford U-13 Goats. They took first place in the win tournament. Some congratulations for our younger wrestlers, Youth Wrestler Sawyer, who placed fourth in New England Wrestling. Also, Logan Russell, who placed third in the New Eng, in the New England Youth Wrestling Tournament. This was in Fitchburg, Massachusetts. Want to congratulate the New Milford Winter Guard for taking first place in competition on their marks, on their March 16th competition. Congratulations to the Soccer Club of New Milford U-16 team, as they took second place in the win tournament. Also, the Soccer Club of New Milford U-14-15 team, they took first place in the win tournament. Want to congratulate the New Milford High School Percussion Green Heat for taking first place in competition in Shelton. That was on March 15th. Also, big congratulations to the New Milford Varsity Wrestler, and we've talked about him before, Alec Olbert, on making, uh, the finals. He took second place at the New England High School Wrestling Championships in Providence, Rhode Island. His career record was 124 wins, 24 losses. His senior year, he was 43 wins, four losses. So, uh, congratulations. For those that are watching tonight, if you could take a look on the Mayor's page, uh, we continue to ask for those, uh, to help us pay for the New Milford Youth Sports Athletes cost of using turf fields. We have a fundraiser, uh, using Green Wave soap that was made specially for us by Go Boys. There's a link, it's three bars for $20. And this money, uh, the, the soap was gifted to us. So this, uh, money goes directly towards paying for the youth sports teams to use the turf fields, as a lot of these youth sports teams, uh, are, you know, having some economic trouble in these times. Uh, New Milford Police Stats, and speaking with Chief Saruto tonight, or today, uh, we continue to really work on traffic enforcement, especially speeding and distracted driving. Motor vehicle stops in the year 2024, this time during 2024, was 912. So far this year in 2025, it's 1,227. That's an increase of 315 or 34%. Motor vehicle accidents in the year 2024 was 158. 21 of them were in parking lots. This year is 183, with 38 in, in parking lots. That's an increase of 25. Of the increase of 25, 17 of those were in parking lots.
Yeah.
So, uh, please make sure you're in a parking lot, that you look both ways before you pull out. If there are stop signs within the parking lots, to please obey the stop signs. Uh, you know, do the courteous thing, let people out. Don't try and, uh, maneuver your way through those tight places, uh, so we can reduce those accidents, not only on the road, but in the parking lots. DUIs in the year 2024 were 12. So far this year in 2015 will be 18. And, uh, the CIT, as the chief talked about with the opioid settlement, we've trained, uh, some more officers in CIT response, critical responses, uh, which is anything from homelessness, drug addiction, to domestic violence. Uh, uh, we have, uh, 19 cases since January, and 10 different officers... We have nineteen cases since January, and ten different officers responded.
That's good.
So that shows you the CIT training is working. Van Car Bridge, that road, that bridge is now closed, as we're doing that work, and the crew today was working on installing debris shield underneath the existing bridge, which will then be ahead of its removal, are looking to have that bridge completed by the first or second week of November. And that's what I have for mayor's comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on to item seven, I would like to move that we accept item seven dash one, the grant for the four-year twenty-five, it's a DDVHE grant, that we were awarded, actually, twenty-four, is distracted driving, high-visibility enforcement, and the grant is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents from the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office, and the office will conduct high-visibility traffic enforcement during the applicable grant period of April first, twenty-twenty-five, through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Funds will be received and put into account, an account determined by the Director of Finance.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the grant? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions?
I'd like to move on item seven dash two, which is a similar word, award, rather, it's for your twenty-five click-it-or-ticket enforcement grant of seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents from the Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office, and this will support seatbelt enforcement activities during the applicable grant period of May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, through June first, twenty-twenty-five, and those funds will be received and put into an account determined by the Director of Finance.
And we have a second, any discussion on the motion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Mayor?
How come it's such a short period of time?
That's what the feds want us to, that's the timeline they give us, I think, to use that money to be very impactful in a short time, so we're just going by what they're giving us. Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number eight, we have a presentation on the twenty-twenty-five road construction.
John?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Town Council, pardon my wincing, I got out of my truck and my back went into spasm, so I apologize for getting out and walking around outside, so, it'll go away, it's just minor, I got out too quick. Good evening, I'm John Whitman, I'm the chairman of the New Milford Municipal Roads Committee, and over the last nine years, nine years, wow, huh, since the inception, the Municipal Roads Committee and the New Milford Department of Public Works team have succeeded in rebuilding an unprecedented number of roads in town, and never before, never before, has so many miles of the town's worst-conditioned roadways and infrastructure been identified, categorized, designed, and built in such a short period of time. Yet none of this would have been possible without your support and the financial health of this town. Some of the worst-conditioned roads were also some of the most heavily-traveled roads, and they become a maintenance headache due to the road's inability to sustain any lasting repairs, so we embarked on a multi-year plan to address the most worst-performing, high-traffic roads first, and finish up with the lesser-traffic roads, but also in poor condition, and that remains, remains now, and it always has remained. A great plan, only if that great plan is supported by a great maintenance program, revisiting those roads, so that we don't have to just go back in another ten years and tear them up again. So, we've done that, and Jack Healy, our director, has done a fabulous job in instituting that, and making sure that we take care of those roads. So no longer, no longer will a rebuilt fifteen- or twenty-year life expectancy road be left unattended until it needed to be rebuilt again, and that was the past, that's not now, it's not the future. That made perfect sense, and then the resident satisfaction, resident satisfaction. The complaints have dropped, the maintenance has increased, and we're paying close attention to those maintenance processes. Our committee members have managerial, organizational, financial, construction, and engineering skillsets that makes for a perfect fit with the talented team members that this gentleman has brought forward for us. So this is the twenty-twenty-five presentation, and, go ahead, Jack, next one. On March nineteenth to twentieth, we presented with Jack's folks, public meeting sessions to hear the New Milford residents who reside on the roads, plan for rehabilitation in two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand and twenty-five, there were approximately seven miles of roads to be rehabilitated, with either reclaiming or milling and paving, and the total miles of chip sealing and rubberized chip sealing are yet to be determined, but there will be a whole bunch of that. We wanted to know specifics about each road that may not be apparent to us, such as drainage problems, icy spots, sight distance issues, and so forth. So we asked that comments and questions be sent to us using the See Click Fix option, which I have on my cellphone, and questions be sent using also to New Milford DPW, where that can be found, also resident feedback will be assessed into incorporation into the engineering of each project. We had a great public session, we had two of them, last Wednesday and last Thursday night, and we had some wonderful questions, Naya took some wonderful notes, Chuck Ballard was my stand-in for any questions that I could not answer because of my expertise pales in respect to his and Jack's, and a lot of good questions, some great questions, and captured all of those, but I will tell you that the tenor of the meeting was appreciation on behalf of the public. They were just happy with what's going on, they're happy with what they're seeing, they're happy with what they're driving on, so it was nice to hear that, it really is nice to hear that with all the effort that the mayor and Jack and all of you have put forth and given us the power to do all this. Good, Jack. So this is what happened in two thousand and twenty-two, we had seven point eight three miles paved, eleven point eight chip sealed, twenty-three, about ten miles, and then eight in chip sealed, and in two thousand and twenty-four, we also did some rubberized chip sealing, had seven point eight miles paved and six miles chip sealed. For the last three years, twenty-six miles paved and twenty-six miles of chip seal and six miles of rubberized chip seal, and rubberized chip seal, and you'll see that on Grove Street, am I correct? You'll see that on Grove Street. It was our first time we ever tried that, and we also did it on Aspartuck, I believe, right? And it is a much more resilient surface, we were concerned, not concerned, I should say, but we wanted to watch it through its first winter, oh boy, did it stand up, it really stood up. So that rubberized chip sealing has been a real boom, it is more expensive, but on the arterials and the heavy collectors, it really makes a lot of sense putting that kind of maintenance on those roads. Good, Jack. So these are the roads, and it's North Road, Prospect Place, Reclamation, you'll see what that is, I know a lot of you have been through this with me for many, many years, and you'll see some photos of that, but these are the roads, and some of the ones that say drainage only, we have Aquarian, Aquarian work being going on there, where they're gonna be doing the paving, we're gonna be doing the drainage. So it doesn't mean that only drainage is gonna happen on those, I did not put the Aquarian projects around there, but there will be other third parties doing paving. Go ahead, Jack. And then Skyview, and Upland Road, Tamarack, and Reclamation, and County Farm Lane, so it's a pretty good, pretty good menu of roads that are gonna be done this year, about the same number we had last year, maybe a couple less. Good, Jack. So what we do is, with the help of Mark Rosa, and he started this, and Chuck Ballard has picked this up, we have a timeline, a spreadsheet, that we watch all of the progress and see how they're doing with how we are planning to be done by October thirty-first, with everything, there's drainage, and that's Green Suns, and also ARS, Aswell Repair Solutions, they are our prime contractor for doing the paving, and as the drainage goes, they follow up after that. So we watch this all year long, and we have meetings every Monday, starting the construction season, the mayor has called for those meetings, and we have those every Monday morning, and that will start April first, when basically the plants are gonna start opening, and drainage is gonna start on April first. So right now, we're on every other week during the winter months, and then we're gonna go back to every week, and we just, we determine, how was the week, what is an old Saturday Night Live thing, the week that was and the week that is coming, or whatever, how they used to say that, and that's what we talk about, to make sure everything is on board, and we have green, we'll mark it green, and if we don't, if we don't see that green, then something has slipped, and we need to understand why that is. Good, Jack. So a little rough grading, and you've seen all of this, the reclaiming process, when we dig up the entire road, reprocess it and lay it back down, and then just get it all, and then put some process down, maybe on top of that, and this is where we really, the road base really needs to be reclaimed and revisited, and then we'll go back and do some work on driveway aprons. Good, Jack. Milling is just taking off that top course when we think we have a very good base, and then we'll also go through and replace all those really deteriorated catch basin tops. Normally, we don't have the basins themselves in trouble, but on occasion, we do, but every time someone goes out on that road to look, one of Jack's people, they don't look just at the top, they're looking at the basin and inspecting whether or not some of that has to be replaced, and we have, we've rebuilt basins over the years, so it's not something that we do all the time, because the original construction was good, but they're inspecting what that catch basin top is sitting on top of. Good, Jack. Paving the base course and paving the top course, they'll put two lifts on the road when they reclaim it, they'll put the first lift on the road, and then all that'll be inspected, and then at a period of time after that, they'll pave the top course or the riding course. Good, Jack. After all of that is done, we go back and assess the driveways that we have cut, we cut a lot, most of the driveways, especially on the reclaims, we cut them, and when they go back and make sure that when they do it, that the pitch is correct, that the water drains towards the road, doesn't drain towards the property, right, so we're very careful about that, it's not just two feet, we go back and we'll put that big, long, eight-foot level on it, and we'll take a look at it and make sure that nobody's driveway is getting flooded, because we made a mistake on the pitch of the road, because the road elevation will rise a bit, not a lot, but it'll rise a little bit, and the driveway pitches will change. Good, Jack. So we asked the residents to please use the See Click Fix feature on the DPW website, our Facebook page is also a very good place to take a look, and the mayor has been diligent on putting a lot of updates on his page and on the town's page, I mean, that is a real good place to look, Pete, you've been really spot-on in getting that stuff on there, and with Jack's help. Residents may prefer calling or emailing the DPW phone number, or publicworks@newmilforddpwct.gov, and so we look forward to another successful year. I can't say enough about the team that I'm working with, not just the folks that run my Municipal Roads Committee, that you have all voted in into office, but it's the fabulous relationship we have with the DPW, it's just, I couldn't tell you that any greater kudos than the relationship I have with this gentleman and the people who work for him, and the mayor. So I thank you very much, any questions? I've done this for nine years now, and I probably answered a lot of your questions in the past, but I enjoy being here, I enjoy being here, even, I'm gonna walk out there and wince a little bit back to my car, but I really enjoy being here, I do, I enjoy the responsibility that you allot of me, and I enjoy, and I really enjoy the position that I chair. So, questions?
Any questions for John?
Who's with you tonight?
John?
Sorry? I'm very sorry, that is my bad, I'm so sorry. Is Jerry Lucovitz, she's one of our commission members and her husband, so thank you very much, I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm so, I'm sorry, I walked by you twice, walking out there. No, 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 that's fine, and Jerry attended, Jerry and Peter, they attended both of our public sessions, so, and again, my pride, just representing these folks.
Hard work, the committee's hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I would pro... Ms. Logan?
Item number nine, we have a financial report from our finance director.
Good evening, members of the Town Council, members of the public, I am here to go over our financial position as of months of February, which puts us at eight months into the fiscal year. Starting with the revenue side, so so far, we are trending as expected, we are on good trajectory to meet our budgetary expectations, some areas we should be able to exceed our target, as an example, we do break up interest between two accounts, one is general interest from various accounts, and one is SIP interest, where our main source of an assigned fund balance is resigning. So as an example, in a regular interest line, as I mentioned before, due to identifying additional sources of interest, we actually, that amount is higher by about forty-two thousand. These additional sources bring additional interest, which will be recorded on a quarterly basis, so for the months of January and February, it is about forty-two thousand already received, it's just not recorded in this particular report. So interest is showing somewhat decline, but at the same, a very slow decline, which is good news for us, we do want it to remain where it's at, to make sure, you know, we collect, it's an additional source of revenue for us. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the fact that we're not receiving additional state revenue, it's a bit of a downside of this year's operations, for the last two fiscal years, state did distribute unanticipated revenue to municipalities, however, this year, that revenue is not gonna come in. But other than that, departments are trending well, building permits is already at about ninety-two percent, so they should be able to exceed their target, but, and generally, we do not anticipate any issues on the revenue side. And if you have any questions, I can take them now.
Any questions for Ogan, revenants? Okay.
Moving on to the expenditure side, again, eight months into the fiscal year, all departments are staying within their appropriations, the only issue that we've had is the overtime line that needed your attention, and Town Council Board of Finance did vote, that was overtime due to winter storms. Other than that, departments are staying within their allotments, we don't anticipate any issues as expected, and we've seen that in the past, we have two lines that we show over budget, but those are expected, one is hazard days, it's an unknown expenditure, depends on attendance from New Milford residents to those days, so that will be dealt with at year-end, as we've done in the past, but other than that, nothing really else that stands out, which is good news. And if you have any questions, I can take them now.
Thank you, Ogan, for the report.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Under your next section, are you planning on making any comments about the accident at Century Brass?
Century Brass?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I can, I'll put that under economic development.
Okay. Item ten, Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the renewal of the Con Pond lease agreement with Canterbury School and the town in New Milford.
And this is a, do I have a second?
We have a second?
Second. Thank you. This is a longstanding lease agreement that we have with Canterbury School to use Con's pond, those that see it up on Route two oh two, they do anything from fishing to ice skating during the winter, I know Randy took a look at it, it beats, right, Randy, it meets all of the standards, same thing.
That's right.
You know the insurance for the lady of this woman? I think the director is in charge of insurance, or is your director, Clint, and all of us in charge of insurance? Jack with the firm, make sure we add that coverage on that.
Absolutely. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Oh, second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Economic development?
Next, economic development, and real quick, at Century Brass, I think, oh, Jack left already, Century Brass on Saturday, there was an excavator that was doing work, doing the chipping of large logs that can't really be split, they're really not any good, some, most of it's like, not good wood at all to burn, and he, when he was working, he dropped the excavator, so it fell on its side, and in so doing, Jack Healy, our DPW director, was called, Mike Boucher was there, our highway foreman, as well as Chris Jerkins, our highway foreman, our Water Witch Fire Chief... Fire Chief was there, and that was Sean Delaney as well. They were there, and then officers, two from DEEP were there as well, and they came as well. I came later, but they were all there. And from what I'm understanding with Jack Healy and everything, they were able to ascertain less than a gallon of diesel fuel was spilled. It was spilled on the wood chips, of which the wood chips were bagged and then taken away. A big wrecker was brought in to upright the excavator, and that's pretty much what happened.
Nobody hurt?
No, thank goodness. Mary Jane?
So, is this our equipment that was?
No. This was the contractor's equipment.
And there's no OSHA? Has no report to OSHA about the accident?
The OSHA report, we can ask, Jack, I think they were called. So, I don't know the parameters after that's completed, but I know that they were called. And I know DEEP was on site, so they were there, as well as our DPW crew.
Was, was he there by himself? Was he alone? Nobody else was there?
Mary Jane, I'm not sure. I wasn't there. I got there right when all, all of the people were there, so I'm not sure, I don't know.
All right.
But I can find out for it.
Yeah, 'cause I had heard that, that he left the site or something, or, I don't know if that's true or not.
He left the man who owned the machinery?
The man that was operating the machinery, that he left the site, is that?
I, I can find out the logistics time. I, I just got there, it was later on after I came from an event. And at that time, DEEP was there, they had our guys that were there. The fire chief had already gone and left, so they were already there on scene and had left. So, but I'll, but I'll ask about the time.
So, he was hired by this other company that's working there? Is that correct?
He was the actual contractor.
Oh, he was the actual contractor?
Yep.
So, and it was his equipment and?
His equipment, correct. Was it our?
There's no risk of legal?
No.
Nothing?
It was kind of a short tip.
A short tip? Well, you know what I mean, like, wasn't like it, like went that far. Kind of went right down and hit the pile of wood, I think, didn't it?
From what I saw, it just fell on the wood chips itself.
Yeah, yeah.
And obviously, we don't want any accident.
No.
At all, but thankfully, it was on the wood chips, and it was only less than a gallon of diesel. He was safe. You know, we had great response times from all of our, from our first responders and also from our personnel, so. Any other questions? Okay. Staying on economic development, first thing, pretty cool, is I met with a company that is doing the Candlewood Valley Country Club's renovation work. They're putting in a brand-new, which I'll pass around to everybody, brand-new clubhouse. I don't know, Mike, if you can see that or not. If not, I apologize. And I'll just pass it to everybody. So, they're looking to redo their clubhouse.
Right.
Within their clubhouse, they're gonna expand their, yep, just two different views, they're gonna expand their banquet hall facilities to allow for more, for more dining experience as well as different events. They're also going to, I believe, change one of the, one of the golf holes, the ninth green, to make it for this type of expansion. It's just great to see, you know, them looking to expand and rehabilitate that, that current clubhouse and current banquet facility. They're also gonna be doing, once completed, they're also gonna do regular eating, you can go in and, and through their restaurant and get that as well, so that was really good to see. Some of the things that are going on as far as with the Connecticut Small Business Development Center is on March twenty-seventh, they're doing their SBA lending in-person event expo. So, with your small business, you can learn from Small Business Associ- Association.
When is the expo?
That is March twenty-seventh, nine AM to noon, and that's an in-person event. That's at the Central Connecticut State University Alumni Hall, which is thirty-nine Ello Grasso Boulevard in New Britain. They're gonna feature over twenty bankers and lenders from throughout Connecticut, and you can go and discuss your business financing needs. And there'll also be other SBA resource partners and stakeholders will be there to talk about business counseling, training, mentoring. This is, also, you can attend a free workshop that'll be there to grow your business. You can check in at eight-thirty AM. Walk-ins are welcome as well. The SBDC is also doing an Unlock Your Business Growth with Strong Credit. This is an actual virtual, this is gonna be from six to seven PM. And what this is, is you can look at credit and how important it is, not only to us as people, but also to businesses. This is a sixty-minute interactive session, and you can go to the mayor's page and you can opt into the QR code to opt into that event as well. Also, they're doing a Financial Essentials. This is gonna be on April second, April ninth, April sixteenth, and April twenty-third, six PM to seven-thirty PM. This is a four-session interactive course, and that's to empower small business owners with practical financial insights and tools. You can learn key financial concepts. And again, this is another free event, and you can check there. You have Amanda Trachkin in Virginia Spell, and she's with the Urban Lead from Urban League from Southern Connecticut. She's our active CEO that'll be helping. Also, webinar series Exit Secession Planning and Employee Ownership Options for those that have a business, looking to maybe retire and go to kind of the next stop, here's some options for you. This is on Wednesday, April twenty-third, from noon to one PM, and talks about where to start with something like that. Then they'll have a second part, which is Wednesday, the thirtieth of April, from twelve to one. Has ever thought about selling your business? And you'll have Shelley Kohler, she's the business advisor, as well as Michelle Augustine, both of them will be talking about that.
Is that virtual?
That's virtual as well, yep. And then you can, another one that they're doing as well is the Department of Consumer Protection is having free training for professionals to learn about requirements for food packaging and labeling. That's gonna be on Monday, April fourteenth, from nine AM to one PM, same thing. You can go virtually, and you can check these out on the mayor page or the New Millford Economic Development page as well. Let's see, what else do we have? The WBDC, which is the Women's Business Development Council, is having a meetup, which is in Stratford, and no registration required. This is gonna be Tuesday, April eighth, from five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. This is part of their Leadership Network. That's gonna be at the Whiskey Barrel in two-fifty-one East Main Street in Stratford. They're also gonna have a Coffee and Conversation. That's going to be Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, from ten-thirty AM to noon. This is up in Hartford, on Pearl Street, up in Hartford. And great offense to come and network with that as well. And let's see, what else we have? The Small Business Marketing Powerhouse Proof Stacking Free Score. And score is another, yep, this score is another tool you can use if you own a business. These are mentors that have owned businesses and for free of charge. You can go in and learn more things. You can learn about some of the things that they've already done or gone through, and it's free mentoring. And this one is attendees are gonna learn about what is proof stacking, understanding the customer characteristics of sales funnels. They're also gonna do case one studies. They're also gonna do how you can, how you can work with social media, video, and SEO strategies. And this is by Ed Winslow, who is a career entrepreneur for over thirty years with that.
And where's that, Mayor?
And that's virtually.
Oh, does.
So, be able to check it out as well. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to move that we move into executive session, and we'd like to have attorney Randy DeBella and our finance director Olga Melnikov, and others will have to depart. That's a motion, do I have a second?
Any discussions on the motion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
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 Okay, I'd like to move to return to regular session. There were no motions made or votes taken during the executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. All those in favor of coming back in session?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And just for the record, we are waiting as per recommendation from our town attorney. There's still 23 days left for an appeal. So this is still considered litigation and we are going to continue to speak with our legal representation, our finance director when and if the award is settled and we in public will talk about how we are going to pay for it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That's right.
And do we have a...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you for tuning in. Bye-bye.
Thank you.